Okay, good evening. Today is May 8th at 6:30 PM. I'm meeting with my first select woman, joined by Steve Hall Slocken and Amanda Thompson, spot person, and I call this order selection meeting to order. So first, we just have a little change to, two changes to the agenda. Just making sure. Okay. First, we need to add 6B. We just need to change. It says appointments now, and I need it to be appointments and resignation.
I'll make a motion to change item 6B from appointments to appointments and resignations.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor of the change, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next change is to 6E. I have ARPA update, and we just have to add an request to that.
Make a motion to change item 6E from ARPA update to ARPA update and request.
All right, all those in favor of that change, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So now we can get started. We have public comments. If anyone would like to say anything now? Well, wait, okay. Next is correspondence. I received an email from, that was included in an email, from Farmington River Watershed Association, just reaching about, reaching out about some concerns on the Farmington River. And I guess the most dangerous, or excuse me, endangered rivers. And I'm guessing it's in connect, it says American River, so it's probably in the entire country. Farmington River was listed at number six, and there were some issues at the dam, including a shuttered fishway. There were flow issues, toxic algae blooms. And this, um, this email came from Amy Petras. She's the executive director of Farmington River Watershed. So she just wanted to bring awareness to the Farmington Valley Collaborative. And then we had a follow-up email from our town representative of the lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook Wild and Scenic, Mike Crayman. He, which East Granby's a member of. And he just let us know that he sent a letter on behalf of the Wild and Scenic to Commissioner Digg at the CTDEP expressing the concern with the fist passage and other effects of flow conditions at the Rainbow Dam. So they're looking for, for help. So want everyone to be aware of that. They're actually, um, they reached out to Stanley Blackenbecker to come to the table with River Restoration Partners and Connecticut DEP to help solve the problems. Okay. And then the letter from Mike Crayman. Then we want to see it. And I have an update, a capital report from Connecticut Council of Municipalities, CCM. I thought it was interesting just because some of, this was affecting East Granby at one point. Hasn't, it's been, summer's coming, so I'm not really sure what's gonna happen. But it's regarding the House unanimously passed HB 5413, AAC Street Takeovers, which is a CCM proposal to address street takeovers and illegal use of ATVs and dirt bikes. The bill would allow municipalities that have an impounded ATV or dirt bike for violations of an ordinance, the option to destroy the vehicle, and allow municipalities to seize the dirt bikes, even if there's lean on the motorcycle or a ATV. Enable municipalities to establish a fine through ordinance for organizing, spectating, or participating in a street takeover, and to improve license suspension consequences for street takeovers, to include additional fines and possible jail time. So they're cracking down on that. Really good thing. And next, we have minutes from April 10th and April 24th. That all need approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from 410 and 424 of 24 as presented.
Second that.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll get those minutes. Carrie, thank you. And old business, back office shared services are tabled for now. And next on the agenda, we have the Park and Rec State Grant proposal, which is, they're proposing as an ARPA request. So that'll be in 6E, but for now, though, they'll talk about it. So basically, with every grant that you get, there is some costs associated. In this case, this is for the state grant at East Granby Farms, the North Entrance, for the basketball, pickleball, the lighting for the facility, the parking area, the restrooms, and the fencing, which we did win a $500,000 grant for. So there's costs associated, such as the architectural drawings and the surveying and engineering of all the work that they want to do. So there's a cost associated to it, and that cost totals, um, there's a contingency of 1,800 included in a total cost of $19,800. So we do have just over that remaining in our ARPA balance. Uh, over $19,000? We have just over $20,000. So it'll leave us with a remainder of just under 300. So we're gonna talk about them next. Okay, I don't ask any questions now then. So, um, do ladies wanna talk? I know you brought a plan, so I don't know who's gonna do them. Um, it might be difficult to see. Yeah, public television is recording also. They might have a better view of it.
Okay, well, it's off of 187. It's on the north side, as you said. It's basically the existing gravel road that's going to the existing gravel parking lot, which if that goes up to the Falcon Trail. Um, so probably as you enter, there's that field that's being farmed right now. It was a cornfield for years and years.
Yep.
Um, previously, it was approved for a parking lot twice the size and two soccer fields. And so there was a survey that was completed in the town, and it came back as people really are pickleball courts. So we got a grant for it, and we're proposing between two to four pickleball courts for the fence around it and one basketball court. And the lighting is really for the safety, um, security wise, around the parking lot.
So is it around the courts or not really? It's not intended to be used at night?
We're trying to minimize the budget as much as possible. We have the $500,000. Um, and so we're really trying to keep that within budget. So we need to get bidding drawings, which is part of what we're coming today. And then we'll see what we can fit into the budget. If we can expand it, we'd love to.
Most of your areas are down till dusk anyway, right? So it would kind of be within what you normally.
Especially with summer, the kids aren't coming out.
All right, thank you. I had probably.
That's the, that's the north, the north entrance?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's on the right-hand side once you get, okay. Did the soccer association was the one that was planning on doing the fields there a long time ago?
Originally, when we did the original master plan, at the time, we're just need a soccer field. That's no longer the case anymore. And we lost basketball courts. When we did expansions at the schools, there's no longer any outdoor basketball courts in town that are regulation size anywhere. And especially with COVID, to be able to do more outdoor things. Pickleball really seems to be a big, you know, every town's putting things, so it'd be nice for not only kids, but seniors too, to be able to do stuff there. So this was more the need at the moment.
Excellent.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna wait off on the request to 6E. Okay, next, we have several appointments. Enter resignation. So first for the student representatives for Park and Rec, we have Chloe Reposey, Repose, and Ella Desumon. They would like to be reappointed to continue serving next year. This request came from Pat Gill.
Okay, we'll make a motion to continue the terms for Chloe Repose and Ella Desumon.
Park and Rec Commission?
To the Park and Rec Commission.
All right, the commission, right? The Park and Rec Commission.
The student reps for the Park and Rec.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you for rejoining, appreciate that. Next is a reappointment request for two youth service member terms. The reappointments are for Mia Hanes, Maya Hanes? Mia. And for Evan Hanks. These came from the Chair of Youth Services, Barbara Evenseco.
They're being appointed to first term?
They're reappointed.
All right, I'll make a motion to reappoint both Mia and Evan to the Youth Services Commission.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
They both wrote really nice letters also, expressing their interest. Okay, then we had a resignation from Inland Wetlands Conservation Committee. George Cornelius, the chairman, resigns on May 5th. He sent a letter. So, um, according to the Conservation Committee's bylaws, the vice chair would move into the chairperson's position. So Jennifer Frank has moved up. We don't really need to appoint her. It's just by default, she's now the chairperson. But to take George's spot, we did get a letter of request from a resident who would like to join. We'll have, um, we can accept the resignation and go on the appointment. Um, we received, I'm trying to see where my letter is. Of Ron Hunt. He's a, um, he wrote, he's approximately 15 years in the construction field, from site work to constructing buildings, and expresses interest of joining the Inland Wetlands Committee.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to accept George Cornelius's resignation and to appoint Ron Hunt to Inland Wetland Commission.
Um, I'll second that. Okay, just as a matter of discussion, I hope we can have somebody talk to Ron about the obligation. Um, at the last Wetlands meeting, um, they did not have a quorum and had to make some last-minute calls. And so I just wanna make sure that there are people who have the time to show up and. Yeah, they were aware of what happened. Fortunately, that worked out that night. Yeah, yeah, it did work out, but I watched that meeting. I didn't know you were here. Okay, so all those in favor of the resignation and the appointment, say aye.
Aye.
All right, well, thank you, George, for your service, and welcome aboard, Ron. Appreciate it. Okay. Next, on the agenda, 6C is the tax collector report. Currently, at the end of April, the collections were 98.6% of 100, which is great, we're almost there. We have some time. And 99.63% of the sewer collections were completed, which is also really good. And so we have two more months, and then we'll be back to zero on July 1st, just start all over again. So let's have those reports. So we'll just need a motion to approve the, to accept the tax.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax report and suspense list.
Uh, we haven't done this.
As you were, tax report as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the tax collector report? They are. Right. I suppose we might have been able to do them together, probably us to do it separate. And then we have one tax refund this month of $692.98 from Honda Lease Trust out of Georgia. I'm not gonna attempt saying that. So I just need a motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion to accept the request for payment.
I'll second that.
All right, others in favor of accepting the refund, say aye.
Aye.
Then next is the suspense list. The suspense list is basically, um, tax obligations that are written off by the tax collector, and there's a process involved. The total for this fiscal year is $20,613.95 from motor vehicles, $853.49 for personal property. From 2008 to 2016, we have some personal property that's being written off of $5,893.79 and four bankruptcy accounts totaling $671.69. The delinquent collections are processed through American National Recovery Group with a very favorable incoming payments on 2008 to 2019 grant lists. We've been utilizing our Department of Motor Vehicle Delinquent Notification System to encourage payment of tax past due. And, yep. Any other questions that anyone has regarding the suspense list can be, can be brought to the tax collector. I don't have that one, but essentially what it's saying is anyone who has unpaid. Okay, sorry, I must have missed it. It's just anyone who had, like, missed payments, setting up their payment plans essentially to get. This is actually writing it off totally and taking it off of our collections because it's so old. Okay.
Yeah, from eight to, eight to 19 or something? Eight to 16, I think I read on it. Um, these, these things have been out there, and they've been hunting them for, if due diligence has been made, attempt to collect on these. But a couple of them are bankruptcy situation, bankruptcy situations that are, it's probably untenable.
Sorry, I missed that somehow. It, it was this morning, I missed it. Yeah. I didn't get it until the weekend, so. Um, so we'll just need a vote to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the suspense list.
I'll second that. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next is the 6D, the police log. So I'll go through the police log. Um, for the month of April, there were nine motor vehicle accidents, 15 alarms, one criminal mischief call, one disturbance, three domestic incidents, three fires, one marsony, 38 medical assists, two emergency committals, 20 suspicious incidents, 31 traffic stops, one untimely death, 339 patrol checks, and 601 total calls for service. Of the 31 traffic stops, there were 27 warnings handed out and three citations were issued. Don't know what the remaining one was, probably just.
I've declared with no action.
Declared with no action. Okay.
That would be my speculation.
Thank you. Did everyone have that? You have that? Okay, next is the ARPA update. So we have currently the balance of $20,072.39. And we have a request for $19,800, which would leave us the balance of $272.39. So we can discuss the request. I'll be late. Do you wanna make a motion first and then discuss? Sure. Can I make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the, the request for the ARPA funds for the East Granby Farms.
I'll second that. Yeah, so I, so there's $18,000 in a contingent fund for, like, things that go wrong in the project, right? Is that what? 1800. They're 18, 1800. Okay, 1800. It's a contingency, sometimes it's usually like 10%. Yeah. Okay. And with the remaining ARPA funds, was there, was that set aside for any particular reason? Or is it just? It wasn't set aside. I did have some conversations with Rosalie about it, and she was like, if there's any possible way, because we know this is coming, right? But we hadn't had any other requests either. And do we have to use it by the end of 2024? We have to account for it by the end of 2024. Okay.
I can't imagine giving up a half million dollars for 19 grand. That's, you know, that's just, that's easy math. So, and not for nothing, Rosalie, I mean, when was the original planned on? I mean, I remember that way back.
The original plan was two soccer fields.
I don't know, I mean, I'm a whole East Granby Farm project.
But when did you put the phases?
Yeah, I mean, it's been forever, and it's nice to see that something else has been doing out there. I mean, not, my, my, my kids benefited from the ball fields that were up there and the use of the, um, the community center, et cetera, et cetera. It was a great project, right? There were so many other things that were initially, you know, kinda like specked out to have happen there. And then it kinda, like, everything else, you're planning a plan, and sometimes it just doesn't come together. But it's, uh, to have that start to expand some is brilliant. I think it's a, it's a great thing. Yeah, yep. Well, now I'm gonna play pickleball, 'cause I'm older, and that's gonna work it out again. There you go.
Out of curiosity, are you going to do, like, um, some kind of, like, to reserve the courts? 'Cause I just know it's been like, uh, like, are you gonna do, have some kind of a sign up to, like, reserve courts? Or is it just gonna be open? I just have heard in other towns like it, it gets like.
We'll do a combination of both, because if we do any leagues, like, if we run leagues, like.
That's true.
We'll walk those times.
Sign up. Yeah.
We'll probably do a combination.
East Granby residents first?
Yeah, always.
'Cause I know we get calls all the time from other towns. Do you have pickleball courts?
And we have residents who desperately are trying to get into those other towns, and they can't.
Right.
You know, they're, it's there. It'll be great to have them start.
You said two to three? Two, four? Two to four?
For any of the four, every league in town.
Oh, that's cool.
Also, it shows actually more to the basketball courts.
Right.
But right now, for what we have, we're getting at least start.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, and that, and that type of, um, surface is, I mean, if pickleball goes out of phase and something else comes in, it, it's a multi-use surface. So it's, you know, it's never gonna be a waste. It's gonna be one of those things that if something has to shift or change because of current, you know, desires of the folks in town, that's an easy, it's easy. It's, the structure is there, the infrastructure is there. Able to be changed, that will basically.
And the committee is keeping in mind that although we only have enough to do this, they're setting it up so that if we ever have the opportunity to finish, that we're not gonna sort of cause damage to what we've already spent our money out.
Gotcha.
And be able to add easily. Simple to what we did in the first phase, where we had enough money to renovate the small Sears house for offices, build the rec center, get the ball field, and, and then we slowly added the picnic area and different things and, you know, to finish that things off, so.
Yep.
Yep, and it's good to get folks outside, that's for sure.
That was the whole point of ARPA funds.
Yep, get people outside.
Like you said. All right, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
I'm certainly in favor.
Aye. Okay, awesome. Congrats, yeah, you can get started. Thanks for coming. Uh, Rosalie, can you hang on one second?
Yes.
Glad you're here. I'm glad you're here, actually, by the way. So I got your. I thought you were gonna get away.
Nice try.
6G, I meant to ask you today, and you scooted. Um, so 6F is, I got a request from Missy. She said, "I'm ready to request a committee convened to oversee the next roof project." This is the roof area over the 20, 2001. I believe that is the area. And she said, "Renovation to East Granby High School." I've spoken to Roger LaFleur, who does our request for proposals, and Ray Carlson, our facilities manager. And they both feel we need to get this started in order to do the project for the summer of 2025. So my question was, I don't know really, do we just ask the public who wants to join a building committee? Or?
Oh, well, usually.
Go back to the other building committee and ask. I figured they would've said they wanted to be a part of it and just carry over.
Maybe, or like, when, um, Alicia was putting together the committee for this, we tried to get people who had a background.
Construction.
You know, so we usually look for somebody who maybe vets in town, who has a construction background, who's served on other building committees before and understand what the process is, did that sort of thing, so, um, you know. Because sometimes you'll just get, if you just put it out there, you'll just get.
Right, so just directly reach out. So I guess if, if anyone's listening and they have a background and they wanna join, that we agree. Okay, and then we'll reach out to the previous.
As we talked before, they don't have 20 people on it, 'cause you'll never get a decision.
Right, and I guess I wasn't sure if the previous committee can come in over this one or not, but I'll ask. Okay, perfect. All right, so we, we're looking for that. Awesome, you're excused. Thank you for saying.
Dismissed.
You're dismissed. And, um, so 6G. I received an email from Kelly, our treasurer, and you guys have a copy of the email. So we have two funds in town. One is one, it's our accounting fund. One is 170, and one is 172. And 170, Fund 170 is where we collect sewer money, and we pay our MDC bills with it. So we're leaving that fund alone. Fund 172 is our sewer reserve fund, where it is intended, according to ordinance also, or Connecticut State statute, to be used for sewer maintenance and repairs. And we, we've recently redone this department to make sure that new builders and, um, new home builders and new construct, and construction companies building new projects pay the proper fee to connect to sewer. And so we're, we're finally receiving the money we should be. I think it's $1,500 of a sewer. And so we wanna be able to put it in this fund and only use it for sewer maintenance and repairs. So I'll read the email from the treasurer. Um, a group of us copied him this email a couple of weeks ago to discuss the monies that will be coming into the sewer reserve fund with the new developments. The consensus was that the sewer permit application fees should be accounted for in the sewer reserve fund, Fund 172. So it is used for sewer maintenance and repairs only. We thought it would be a good idea if Board of Selectmen officially states any fees going into this fund that the monies and the monies currently in this fund can only be spent for repair and maintenance of the sewers. She said, "Would this be something Board of Selectmen could clarify at their next meeting?" And then, according to the town engineer, he sent me the Connecticut State Statute, the use of funds. It says it. Um, it says, "The use of funds, all benefit assessments and charges for connection with or use of the sewerage system,[1667.08] the use of funds, all benefit assessments and charges for connection with or use of the sewerage system, whether pledged for payment of bonds or notes or otherwise shall be kept separate from other funds in the municipality and shall be used for the sewerage system, including the payment of debt incurred for the sewerage system and interest thereon and for no other purpose. So it says shall be used for the sewerage system. So they really want to just make sure it's used for sewer maintenance and repairs and that we're not taking it out of the other fund, essentially, which we need to pay NDC bills with. She said we could or cannot make a motion on it, so, um, I mean, if you guys are good with it, I'm good with making a motion.
Okay, so the, the new, all of the new permits that are coming in for sewer, um, construction are being channeled into Fund One Seventy Two. And the state statute says that any of these assessments and charges for connection, whether pledged for payment bonds, notes, et cetera, shall be used for the sewerage system.
Yeah.
So it sounds like it's pretty cut and dry.
Our, our town engineer just wanted to, I think he's just nervous. I think he just wants to make sure that we're all under the same page.
As long, I mean, it's, it's, I can't I don't have another way to try and
Okay.
interpret it at this point. I mean, that, that I can think of.
Yeah, I think you just want to make sure it's designated and set aside because it is upcoming thing that we need to pay attention to. So you don't want it to all of a sudden come and we don't have that money set aside because we spent it in our general funds.
Yeah, no, I concur a hundred percent of that, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, if, if we're, if we're getting the things for the purposes of maintaining things that are being put, uh, put in now, um, then we need to have, be able to maintain down the line. I think that's a, that's a fine and dandy thing. And it pretty much fits right in with the statute, so.
Okay, then I'm good.
I'll make a motion to, uh, ensure that all of the fees and, um, that come for the building of sewer systems to the main system be channeled to Fund One Seventy Two for the express purpose of maintenance on the sewer system.
I'll second that. Maintenance and repairs.
Maintenance and repairs.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's great, thank you. Okay, next, I was just going to give an update on the budget, but, um, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Ed presented their budgets again at town meeting last night and did, um, the town, at the town meeting, it was voted on to move the vote to a town referendum, which is May first, six AM to eight PM. So that was voted on, so, um, the general government's budget was three point seven three seven and the Board of Ed's budget was five point eight nine and that present, and increase, and that meeting is recorded and on um, the town website under Uscramby Public Television's link. So if anyone wants to watch it, they're welcome to. And that brings us to public comment. And I just want to mention one thing because I'm not sure of May schedule with Board of Selectmen meetings, but I wanted to remind everyone the Memorial Day Parade is May twenty-seventh and it comes right down through the town center, across Route Twenty. And they have a very nice ceremony and it's, um, for the veterans and it's put on by the Lions Club. So that's ten AM on Monday, May twenty-seventh, and there's a flyover that will um, from the International Guard that will fly over between ten fifteen and eleven AM on that day. So just a reminder. And that's it. Public comment? Committee? We're good? Okay, I would, oop. I didn't see anything. You don't have anything? You don't want an update about trash?
Oh, I did get back to him, so.
Okay, I was, I'm like, but it doesn't hurt to say it to the public if they're curious because it's something we discussed and we've been dealing with the budget, so.
I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure if it was you or not. Okay, so it was you.
Oh, it was somebody.
I just have a, a question about.
Yeah, sure.
The details of it or if there's not too many, a public comment or?
Sure. Yep, so we'll have the details of the RCC updates. That will be, um, Ed's actually away until Friday. So he said, let me just look at everything, make sure it's good to go. The Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance was presented with numbers that we knew when we were presented them, they were rough numbers. So he just wants to come back, tweak them with the finance director and me, and then we'll put something on the town website most likely the end of next week or the beginning of the following. So it'll be there. And, and we're gonna. I mean, you're, you're welcome to now if you'd like. I'm happy to, or email me any um, but once it's decided on, it'll be a done deal.
But do you mean like, will it get approved by Board of Select and Board of Finance? So you'll have opportunity to comment at those meetings, like, once we have full information? Is that what you're asking?
And, and if there's, if I have a say or concern that I have.
I can get you what we had, what was presented, if you'd like to see. It's probably not going to change much from that if you want to take a look at it.
I, my, my concern is that, um, I've heard, you know, different pieces of proposal about having to charge for both by the size of property. Um, and what my concern is that a lot of people bring things to the, to the RCC for bulk waste and they may just bring one.
It'll be, yeah, there'll be a list of items. So if it's like one couch or one mattress or mattress therapy, but if it's one something, there's a price list for it. Like if it's a sofa or a chair, something like that.
It could be something like, you know, like I have the base of a basketball hoop and one of those plastic pans that's very small, you know, but it's got to go in bulk.
They'll have something, they'll have a very specific list. That's what they're working on.
And, and so, um, and it's just for bulk waste, it's not for metal or, uh, yard waste?
Right, so brush is separate and that hasn't been decided if we're doing that yet or not. Right now, I think we're just starting out with bulky.
And then the, the other part of it I'm concerned, because I'm, I'm at the RCC at least once a week, but it's only three days a week, so. Um, and, um, because we had just done some, it just moved in actually, that's, it's, um.
I feel your pain.
Yeah, they're two, they're two, two employees, um, and they're busy.
Yeah, so we're working on that too.
Yeah, I'm just, we're, we're trying to make up for it, hours. Um, you know, I, I can't see two people because one is in the trailer, the other is in the ones, you know, they're both.
Yeah, they're coming up with a plan for that.
Yes, I'm spending more money right now, you know, to do that. I mean, so you actually see a lot of them together. And then just the concern of people not, you know, in here when our taxes are all going to blow up, or people in our break stuff. And so something elsewhere accumulating arts and stuff.
Yeah, that's been taken into consideration too. A, a lot of the reason for doing this is there's people who don't bring anything to the dump and they're paying for the people who do. So it was a way to make it fair. So.
And I, and I know contractors.
Just in overall taxes.
Right.
And then. Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, and I know contractors, it's hard to see the, the problem, you know, say, for the people that are to turn this up and.
They know. They know.
Actually, they're pretty good.
They know who the frequent flyers are. Yeah.
I mean, they, you know.
You only have so many backups to remodel, take a thing, you know.
And Walt was good. Walt would do the rest, he's a lot.
Right, right, it's true.
Um, uh, I guess, I guess that was it, just.
Yeah, and Ed does watch these meetings, our Director of Public Works, so he'll take, he is aware of the questions and things. Because he did visit several towns and he, he knows. And we've talked to Pains about it and he knows what the things still got for.
And for the, for what we use, I, I, you know, seventy, fifty dollars was steel, seventy-five dollars was, for me, was
Dirt cheap.
Quite okay, you know. Especially if they have, you know, projects remodeled.
Mm-hmm. Appreciate that. So, um, once Ed has a plan together, um, will he come present it like at a Board of Selectmen meeting or something where public can kind of view the whole?
Yeah.
We'll do that. And then he's planning on, um, he'll put up a big, one of those big lighted signs just for people who weren't aware of it, just to know and there'll be, there'll be plenty of notification. Yeah.
Are we shooting for a July first start date?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the hope.
July twenty-third.
Yeah, so I'll have it at a meeting. It's not.
Do all your renovations in June?
I mean, the hope is to bring down the regular fee, so. With, you know, hopefully we'll get, we'll break even at least.
I mean, just with, with us on topic, uh, and generally how these visions would have placed it, why they could.
We have, and we kind of discussed, I know, um, the previous Selectmen, Joe Doring, was really, you know, look, looking at ways to, um, conserve and, and recycle. And I've met numerous times with Pains and there's a cost to all of it is the problem, you know.
I mean, it's, you know, it's the projects that they've done in some places really induce the amount of household waste. Um, you know, and, and there could be some costing that can be seen.
I mean, do you want to start a committee? We have committees here.
But that may be the other.
Yeah, no. Yeah. Yeah.
And if it's a regular household. I'm noticing that, obviously, it's up there. The trash in the back of it should be going.
Right. Right, true. Yep. It'll be, probably be some trial and error. We're trying to get out all the kings before we start it, so. You have to get an idea after a year, right? Like how, right?
And where are we at exactly?
He knows exactly. Like, he knows already what our savings are going to be just by the amount of hauling that we have, even with having to recycle the new recycling.
Compactor.
Compactor. We've saved a lot of money so far, so that department has a big save in it. So, yeah. Yeah, of course, thank you. Okay, next, I need a motion to adjourn, please.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. All those in favor, adjarring?
Aye.
We are adjourned. I don't even know if I have to ask, but we're adjourned.